Work session for today. Each year we have a work session, dinner with our advisory committee. So this is the Prostag Dinner. We want to welcome you all and thank you for your work. And why don't we go around, we've got some new faces, so why don't we go around and just do a quick round of introductions. And Frank Folsom, Mayor.
Mark Laces, Mayor of Prostag.
Hi, I'm Andrew.
Susan Stanish, Prostag.
Corbin Honegger, Prostag.
Dan Wallace, Prostag.
Corey Oxter, Prostag, Chair.
Kamler, Trustee.
Neil Shaw, Trustee.
Al Bergerson, Prostag.
Kevin Ryan, Trustee.
Sandy Gammere, Trustee.
Lars Kucinski, Trustee.
All right, thanks everyone. We've got a couple of items here to talk about on the agenda. We do need to wrap up about 6:40 in order to break down the tables and get ready for the regular meeting. We've got an advisory committee interview at 6:50, so we just need to have time to change the room over, so let's plan it at 6:40. So I'll let you take it away with the agenda.
All right. So basically, we just wanted to touch base on where we're headed with the remainder of the year and make sure we're understanding what the work plan is and what our focus is as we move forward. Number one on the agenda was really, the Riverbend Park has been one of our key focuses with the community engagement and getting that feedback and information from the community. So we've started that process and we were, I guess I was at the last board meeting like a month ago?
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember when it was, but so we've started that process. We've put out flyers as well as the online survey, so we have some of that information. We're getting some of that back. We have another public engagement here coming up on Wednesday, trying to get more input and feedback. So really, that's our starting point and what we've been tasked to do and just want to make sure we're still on the right track with that. And just wondering what the board direction is, if we're to receive any direction on any further items, but really, I think the information is the key before we kind of stop or change course or anything like that. So I know that that was kind of one of the discussion points in the last meeting. So just want to touch base on Riverbend and see if there's any other input from the board or if we're headed in the right direction or where we're headed.
Quick question. Matt, have we sent mailers out?
Yes.
And who received them? Everybody?
Townwide.
Townwide?
Right, was that right? Townwide?
I got one.
Yep, I got one.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so there we go.
Castle Peak.
Wednesday, are you guys doing like an hour before your meeting for the public engagement and then going into the long-term meetings? How fast are you? That was the, yeah, right now, we were saying from 7:00 to 8:30, I think, was the, like an hour, hour and a half to get as many comments as, you know, as many communities shows up, we're going to take all those comments and understand that and record it. And then I guess the question is, after that, how much of a meeting we're going to have and what the key priorities are to wrap up that.
And is this going to be the same format as, say, like the Rec Center a year ago, where there's things around, people have sticky notes or what do you guys picture?
Well, we talked about having some and I'm not sure if we have just like a map. We talked about having more of a map and just an understanding of where those zones are and not into the depth of what the details are of the park yet because we want to make sure there's a part wanted and what some of those amenity questionnaires would be. And then just really open public comment. And so having a map and just understanding where we are, is what we're talking about.
Focusing on demand.
Yeah, more demand in what zone because I know that there was also a discussion of not Riverbend, but somewhere in that zone, north and east of Rock Creek.
Is there any new information from our consultants as to whether there are alternative uses that would work or are we still waiting on that information?
I'd look over at Patrick.
Yeah. So right now, definitely alternative, are you saying alternative uses in terms of your traditional?
Alternative locations rather than Riverbend.
Correct. Yeah, there's one further down, I guess that'd be east on the path of the 88 by the lanterns project. There's kind of an open space in our school over there and that'll be indicated in the public meeting as well. Excellent. Is there? If all is alternative, non-traditional environmental play.
Right.
Both locations and uses. Is there, has there been any, and forgive me, maybe I missed in my emails, has there been any additional email communication this week out to the public through listservs or anything?
There wasn't.
I thought there was.
Yeah, it was.
No one has posted anything to CAC though. Not that you have to, in case we want to cover anybody outside of the town. I mean, we've got the direct mailers, we've got the emails from the town, it's the CAC and probably the last spot.
And how long ago did the direct mailers go out?
Last week.
I got mine about a week ago.
Yeah.
I didn't receive that, but I did get the email, so I got covered.
Yeah. And I don't know how, what current is, but the last that I saw, there were 62 responses on the online. I think so. I don't know if that's really good or bad, but that's what it is.
So for the public engagement session, if you do take the sticky note approach, would it be possible to, I mean, I know we always have different colors of sticky notes. Use those colors to represent people from different parts of town. So these are people who live right in that immediate area. These are people who live maybe south Rock Creek. These are people who live other areas of Superior. And I think that's something that would be really easy when people walk in, just say, hey, where do you live? Great, you get pink sticky notes and you get yellow, but it gives us another data point to consider.
We could probably tie that back to the survey. We had like the five zones, I believe it was, of kind of where you are in town.
Exactly.
Those five zones.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, we can tie that in.
A reminder, a big difference between what we did with the Rec Center and this is the Rec Center, there was already concepts laid out there and the sticky notes were primarily used to say, do you like this? Do you like this? What would you change different here and there? This is a different scenario. This is more of a, is there interest, you know, for a park? Is there an interest for a park here? Is there an interest for a park over here? More at a higher level than what would you change?
Sure.
But at the same point, we want to get, if there is an interest for a park, is it more you want kids' play structure or more, you know, natural play structure? And I think there's different levels of that, but I'm not really sure how much we'll get out of any of those. So I guess the key would be is we want everyone to come and if we have this, a very large crowd, definitely use the stickies and, you know, use that as their avenue, but as much as we can have people talk, and if it is a smaller group, we'll just have them come up and say their name and location, et cetera. But it's really going to be gauged on how many people are here because if we have too many, I can't have everyone talk at the same time. Right? So as long as we have that engagement and there's a large number of people, the sticky notes is the best way for people to convey their information and we'll have enough members of the committee to get that information and be able to talk with those people.
And to me, one of the most important questions as we go through the amenities is really a why do you want this amenity? Is it because it's not available anywhere else or is it because it's not walking distance or close enough or something along those lines? And I know we ran into that when we were talking through Lake Shore last year around, is it a gym isn't available at all or there isn't a gym close enough? And so I'd like to make sure we make that distinction.
Okay. So and I guess I'll try and stick to the agenda, but I have other topics too because that kind of ties to the whole amenities list and what we have and what we want and where we want to head. But all these are amenities that we're looking at within this list, whether it's Riverbend or Trail Connectivity or White Raven, they're all somewhat amenity driven. So I don't know, do we want to continue elaborating on Riverbend? I mean, we're going to have the engagement, we're going to continue that process.
Corey, you might want to just mention the one in June where we're actually going to try to engage people up at that location itself to try to get more of a sense of place and one more chance for people to come and talk to us.
So I know we don't have a town board meeting in between this session and the June 1st session. Can we get maybe email feedback around how the session went?
Sure.
Great.
Would you have one?
Tuesday. Oh, you're right. That is February 1st, yes.
It's the 2nd of June.
Yeah, okay. So on that note, for the May 28th meeting, could we have Prostag attend and give it up to you?
For the presentations?
Yep. I have during the work session.
Perfect. Either way.
Who's that?
It's Tuesday.
I'm pretty sure I saw something on it.
The Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Oh, I should be in town hopefully. Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, well, we'll just continue that process and we'll give you some feedback as we go. So next on our list was really Trail Connectivity in Downtown Superior. It's been one of our kind of high priorities with the Trail Connectivity. The downtown area was identified as a high priority, just making sure that we're integrated as they do the final build outs and continuing the development of the blocks and the development in there. And we did meet with RC Superior like a month ago, something like that. And there was a good discussion there and it seems like a lot of the Trail Connectivity is pretty solidified except for it's not finally approved, but it'll be in the FDPs and there is various connectivities within that. I don't know, I guess, I don't have a map, but there's various connectors and then really just one main on Marshall Road and how it continues through from one end to the other is that kind of on-street path. And then there's various connections within that and I even think there was a couple proposed at Rogers Farm, that property over there. So just, I guess at this point, I don't know how much we can influence those because it really comes into whatever's in the final FDP for that final approval. But it seems like the opportunities for additional trails may be diminishing for, within that space.
Is it Prostag's opinion that the more trails there are connecting Downtown Superior to other areas, the better? Or are you happy with the trails that are, that you assume will be in the FDPs? I ask because we've gotten a number of emails this week about some of the trails specifically going through the buffer zone and up to, up the hill and just wanted to understand Prostag's opinion on that.
At this point in time, I don't think there's any that actually cross the buffer zone. They only get to Track H and I think there's, this is the, literally the, from the original town proposal, and a lot of these trails are being maintained and there was one connection that goes up into Track H, but on the other side of Track H, we don't have any at this point in time that actually connect through between downtown and Rock Creek, Track H. So they all connect at either McCaslin or over at 88.
Well, I think we've heard, what we've heard from the developer was there are FDPs as they come through, will certainly have connections. I think they have at least somewhere between two but four different connections that I think they're thinking going from north to south, connections that will go into.
Tie into Track H.
Tie into Track H.
Right.
But I think the question is, there's a west entry from, to, into Track H and an east entry into Track H. What's the Prostag opinion around, should there be more?
Yeah. I don't know, is the computer on? Can we pull up that trails map?
You can pull up, Matt.
Patrick?
Yeah, Patrick.
You know which, you know my latest one, right?
It's Google Earth or something, so we.
Thank you.
Can I see? When was this map created?
That map was created about four or five years ago, probably.
Okay, so this is, yeah, so this doesn't even show where the plaza, so this must have been like first PD.
That's basically, this is our track match, or our trails map that we look at, but that's like just an excerpt from the original town development plan.
Yeah, this is like PD number one or PD two.
Yeah, it's way down there. But the conceptual connections are still the same.
I just sent an email copy to the board.
Look at that. Sorry, I didn't come prepared with all the graphics.
Oh, we have it on the wrong side.
All right.
So Corey, when you met with.
I don't know how to put that up.
When you met with Ranch, did you guys discuss that map and?
Yes.
And talk about that that's what they're planning on in terms of Trail Connectivity?
Either one. Either one. We discussed this because this was their baseline concept, but they also brought up at that discussion, they brought up various FDPs for that corner and they showed.
Yeah, if you have the other latest map of east.
Anyway, they brought up their FDP of what they were headed toward and what their proposed connections are. And really, it was just confirming that a lot of these from the original plan are still in there and they still have that identified connections. They have like a connection from up by the cemetery to the 36th path that runs along 36th. They have some connections down in the arc 22.
Perfect. So one of the, one of the kind of subjects that we received, you know, emails about was it looks like that middle connection going through.
This one?
Yeah, going through Track H, I guess where, where that would actually connect into. And the concern was raised for the residents that live along Wiggins and Carville, if it's going to go to that, the two cul-de-sacs, if that's the plan.
Well, and this is where there's lots more discussion to be had because I, personally, I think that the connection between the east and west side would be really good, but right now, Track H has that path right there, over to here, and then it stops. And this connection is from the intersection, they have a corner out there, an intersection and it's like a little drainage area, and they're saying that they're going to connect across there and connect to the trail. But from there, that's really RC Superior's development zone. After you get past that, you're at Track H and you can come, there's the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac that you could potentially tie between. Otherwise, you're in between houses. I mean, all these are here in neighbors', neighbors' yards. So all that, all their opportunity would be really right here and then you're almost to the same point where this is the road where there's that potential connection there that really is, should be maintained because Anderson comes up and branches off each way and that was that dead end where that would connect potentially somehow, I don't know if these trails connect like them. But these are all just potential and so this trail was one that they're proposing to connect to Track H. And we talked about it, that, all right, do you go just to your property line or continue to Track H? And they said there's ways that they could do it to continue that last 10, 15, 30 feet, whatever that distance is, to make sure that it gets all tied in versus saying they built to the proper line and we continue. So those are all, I'm sure, discussions that was probably above what I was supposed to discuss. But, and then, you know, like here is up by the cemetery and they were saying that they could still connect in, you know, so they were just maintaining a lot of those same connections that they had in that map up on the top. So.
So that's helpful. So does Prostag have a, so I think with your opinion, does Prostag have an opinion on the connection between Carville and Wiggins into?
I would let anyone else force theirs because.
Has this been, but have you guys, has the topic been noticed and discussed at a meeting?
We briefly talked about it, I think, in that RC Superior discussion. But I don't remember, I missed the next meeting, so I'm not sure if we talked about it in the next meeting.
Have you guys, I don't think there's a sense of urgency here, so if you haven't talked about it and Prostag could notice it and heard the immediacy, you know, I think I was probably the one, I'm eager, you know, what I said a year or two ago was, you know, I personally think that I want as many connection points into our trail system as humanly possible where, where possible and pragmatic, where would be pragmatic. But at the same time, I really want to hear from Prostag or group of volunteers who we've, you know, accepted your, you know, your ability to think about this and make recommendations and so forth. So if we're not, if you guys aren't, if you haven't had that meeting, maybe it might be premature for me to put anybody or for us to put you on the spot.
I apologize for interrupting the public access, but I want to make sure that this meeting is being publicized on TV and recorded. I guess the answers from the individuals on our citizen review video Prostag matter to the community.
I just have one question. I did speak with people on Franco. It's what I do for a living and a lot of it is water rights and I have a lot of friends on Franco. They will not allow you to cross the ditch. It's trespassing as well as going across the buffer zone.
We are being recorded and we will offer an opportunity for public comment. And so if we have a chance, if not at the beginning of the meeting.
So I think Kevin's point is great. Maybe we can save this for a future Prostag meeting. One question I would like to ask that I think you probably can weigh in on tonight is of the other trails that are throughout Superior that kind of are very close to residential homes, has Prostag been aware of any issues with parking near where those trail connections are? So not like a Colton trailhead, but like the little neighborhood trails.
The only one that we've got a lot of feedback on that was negative was, yeah, right up down the street here, Third Avenue where everyone was connecting in and going out to the open space.
Okay. And so the reason for the question is some of the residents who have asked about this connection and who have been opposed have been concerned about parking, so that may be something to explore when you do your notice agenda. It would be useful.
When we talk about all these trails and we talk about the plan and parking is definitely always part of it, some places we've talked about it and we're like, where would they park? How are they going to do it? And that kind of either rule things out or explain one way. Plus usually if it's close to communities, if it goes, you know, there was one talked about where it would go in between, an open space between two houses. And again, we did community engagement in those as well, so.
Great. Okay, thank you.
So I would say, you know, I think we need to have access to the trails from the west, you know, by McCaslin, which we were going to have, and then obviously from the east somehow. I've said in the past that, you know, I think Coal Creek Extension as a bike path would be great. And, you know, with respect to a trail running between Wiggins and Carville and just kind of looking at the satellite imagery, like you can see that there's a trail there, so I can sort of understand why somebody would connect a trail down into, you know, through the buffer area into that, that trail. But the people who are going to use that trail and actually, you know, potentially benefit from that trail would be the residents who live along Carville or Wiggins. And if they don't want it, then I don't really see a need to have a trail there. And also, you know, I think if you have homes and you're all of a sudden putting a trail in somebody's backyard that, you know, wasn't there, you know, I don't think that that's, that's fair. So, you know, I think we've got adequate trail connectivity if we just have the connection from the east, from Coal Creek and then from the west. You know, you've also got a pitch there, you know, with the hill. So I just, I just don't think that that necessarily is the smartest connection. I could see in the, in the initial, you know, planning, if they said, oh yeah, we're going to do, you know, some trail connectivity here and there, but it isn't really necessarily thought through, I think. And just because it appeared on a map from 2013 or 14 doesn't mean that it should be part of the final design.
Mark, you talking about 1C or are you talking about the?
Yeah, I'm talking about 1C, the one that.
Sorry, 1C, but you're saying.
You're saying the connection is not shown right now.
You're saying up in here.
Right, 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 yeah.
1C makes sense, in my opinion, because it's giving the town center folks an opportunity to get on.
To get to here.
Oh yeah, no, that's fine. Connecting, yeah, but going, if you were to connect through 1C south, across the buffer into Carville.
So these are the two cul-de-sacs in the current bike paths. And really, it'd be in here somewhere, but that's a whole different discussion. So when we talked to RC Superior, we just talked about, you know, kind of the property limits and making sure that there was trail interconnectivity within that development and then access from that out. And this would be the one out so that when they were, because of this piece, they did show a trail here and it had some other development over here, but even this road connects now, so they took out the trails in there, but there's some sidewalks and stairs and different connectivities because of grades in there. So I think that they've addressed a lot of our concerns about just having those connections and making sure that once you get in here, you're not just on city streets, there's other opportunities and trails.
Yeah, no, I think it makes sense to connect to the, to the path that's already been laid, right? Obviously, we want to have people use the paths that are there. But I was just talking more to the, to the map, to the paper map that you had there and to the extent that there was discussion about connecting between Wiggins and Carville and there's already resident concern, we're receiving emails about it, that to me just seems like it doesn't make any sense.
We didn't go to that yet. I mean, there was no discussion about, we were just trying to get from here to a perimeter and the.
Okay, no. And that topic was discussed, I think, in 2017 by the prior board and the consensus at that time was probably not, a couple of board members, myself included, thought that a connection to those cul-de-sacs did not make sense and I would, so I would agree with your comments.
So Corey, after you guys met and saw the plans going forward, are there any holes that you see in the trail plan that it makes sense for the town to bring up and push that weren't necessarily already discussed?
I don't think so. I think that they, I mean, from the conceptual plan to what their final proposal are, there's still those connectivities that were identified. And even, I think that, you know, one of the other key concerns was this connection over here. I mean, there's all the development here and right now, they're looking at potentially coming over here and doing a bridge over here that could get us across. I mean, all these were conceptual, nothing was final, but in just that discussion, there was still, there's always been the connectivity of how you get across here and hack of that trail. So they did bring up, and again, that tied into the whole, how do you get in and out of this area? Because there's been a lot of discussion with this trail down, you know, how do you get through on the other trails? So I think that, you know, maintained a lot of the connectivity that we were hoping for and it's just kind of putting it on a map and seeing what it looks like and understanding the trails, because for a long time, it was just a big green spot without paying attention to trails, so.
I don't think we walked away from that meeting feeling like there was any concern to.
Was there any discussion about a bridge over 36?
To canvas trail.
This one right here?
Yeah.
Yes, but every plan that he brought up was a like future bridge discussion? So there's, and I don't know what was final and what wasn't on what he showed us, but there was various layouts of this area and there's a road potentially that continues across if there's a bridge put in. And that would tie back into how some of the trails tie in in that same area.
They were having a road there that dead ended for, with the right angle so that it could be a bridge across if someone wanted to in the future, but that was not part of their plans at all, I heard.
Okay. So, and then, yeah, and then I guess the last, the only other piece that is really unknown is just what all this connection is down here. Sorry, I'm getting off the page, but because as you talk about bridges and connectivity, you know, this is really the new road into the Anderson properties where the existing trail was. I'm really not sure what this is, but there's been various discussions about, I think that was the Dr. Cog extension that would continue along there and where and how that ties in because at some point, I think it's right here, you jump across on the existing bridge. So from there, you know, it looked like you could still get down to the cemetery and then come back into downtown without going all the way down or going all the way up along this way. So there's still some connectivity in there.
Sandy, just a question, the Dr. Cog application, is that a bike use or is it a dual-purpose use?
It's a dual-purpose.
Okay. I just realized, I mean, right, we had a dirt path back there behind, behind what is the Anderson project, which a lot of people use and if it's a bikeway only and we've got bikers screaming at walkers like we do on the bikeway, we may have problems.
Yeah, but it's not, I mean, even 36 bikeways, not just for bikes. People are supposed to be able to walk on it too. And it is an extension there, but it's also so people can walk.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's, I think it's eight feet across. I'm trying to remember. Alex would have to tell you exactly what it was, but it's the same width as the 36 bikeway.
And we did talk a little bit just briefly about, you know, is there any other opportunities for some of the trail connectivity of what's currently built and what's going to come? And the discussion was really, if you put in a temporary trail, it's going to be more difficult to utilize and then it would be work than to, you know, even if some of these connections looked like they were almost there, but they're still in construction area and therefore, you know, it was whenever the FDP comes forward, whenever it gets built, whether it's a year, two years, three years, you know, whatever that timeline is, there wouldn't be any connectivity on any of these until all that's built out, so.
I'm going to push back on that. We have no problem as a town building temporary roads for cars. No problem. Do it all the time. Why are we not building temporary roads for bikes and pedestrians? It's insane to me. It's just insane. This is the third year, this will be the third time I've been on the board and the third year I'm making the same complaint, that kids cannot safely get to the sports stable, to the sports stable. stable, to the sports stable. Without going on McCaslin and that sidewalk is not optimal, and frankly, half the time there's, you know, you don't know when that sidewalk's gonna be closed, because it's a constant construction zone over there. So what are, third, so I wanna hear from Prostag, how does a 13-year-old that's allowed to ride a bike by herself and has something at the sports stable that lives in that part of Coal Creek, how is she supposed to get to the sports stable? And if the, and if Prostag tells this town that we should consider temporary paths, we will consider it, not saying upgrade, but consider a temporary pass. And I say we do it all the time for cars. This is not a car, I don't know, I will not be a cars-first, cars-only community. So any new road that's developed, I will continue to ask, is this a car-only road? What are we doing about bikes? And so I just wanna push back to you guys when you say, well, we, we're not gonna, you know, it's not worth it to do a temporary bike path. Why?
Well, I mean, just to talk to that, I mean, we talked and pushed, like, can you even connect 1C now because it's simple and easy, it's a short path? But really, when you look at the overall big picture, like you said, to get to sports stable, your best bet is coming down 88, going on the existing path, coming over the bridge, and coming back up around, is the best way.
Yeah, you're right, that's, I'm not letting my 13-year-old do that, but you're right.
I know, I'm just saying, that's the best way, because right now Anderson's under construction, too much construction to even try and tie in any of this. And your other opportunity is here, and the only way to get to here is to come up with McCaslin and back down. So either way, you're coming to the McCaslin point on the west. I mean, I'd love to see more trails.
Yeah, I'd like to.
That's why I'm on Wiggins-Carville.
I mean, I want a brainstorming, what's the solution? I'm not, I don't wanna script what the solution is, but if the solution is, you know, you can't get there from here without going on the McCaslin or 36 or visiting another town, that doesn't seem like a good solution.
Now, Kevin, to your point, though, with the Anderson project, if we had just left some space over here, this would've made the perfect path. I mean, right now, there's not, I mean, right now the grade between that cul-de-sac, I guess, is probably 20 feet, but if we had left that usable or pushed for it, you're absolutely right.
But I, I just don't, it's so frustrating, you know, we have this vision as a town of downtown Superior, but it's just, it, I'm sorry to be mean, but it's a pipe dream right now, because we're, we don't have the ability to execute any way for the kids to get down to the sports stable without being in a car. We're not executing on the vision we have for this town. And I'm, I'm super appreciative, and that's not, not backing on, on the volunteers, right? But I want the volunteers to please make a recommendation on what this board can do so we can more effectively execute on the vision we have, because right now it's just not, not doing it for me.
So, Kevin, really good point. One way to deliver a temporary access for bikes and pedestrians is, now, obviously we've got a construct, construction site going on through Anderson, right? And so you don't want, when heavy equipment's coming by, but to the extent, like, once all of the houses are, you know, foundations are poured, the roads are in, I don't see any reason why you can't put in a temporary trail of Coal Creek connecting to, you know, the southeast section of town center.
So I agree, so next summer or the summer after, we might be able to have a conversation. But this summer, this will be the third summer where there's no, no hope for that.
So recommendations for the near term, not the margin of each.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think it's a good idea, but I mean, when you have an active construction site, you know, obviously, that's, that's not safe, but I mean, then, then, you know, where else is the access? I mean, there is no other access other than along McCaslin.
Well, or in the middle where you guys voiced that people don't want it, or you don't want it.
We've heard next.
Well, I mean, that's why I think we're, you know, we, I'll be careful here, I mean, so I'll stick to what I said in 2017, but what I'm asking for is recommendations from Prostag. And what I'm telling you is, not telling you, but what my observation is, I will continue to push back on any temporary road that is built, saying, where's my temporary bike path? If we build a temporary road, we build a temporary bike path, as far as I'm concerned, or a pedestrian path.
And I'd second that, and I think, just to be more concise, what I'm looking for is, in the near term, point A to point B, how do we do that? That's the recommendation. If it can't be done, just say it can't be done, but if can, let us hear it.
Is that something that we should put as pretty high priority on the work plan now?
We can talk about it, put it down as what a recommendation would be. Has been discussed previously too, is always, how do you get across the Freckle Ditch and the roadway access and everything else over here? But as soon as that road goes in for Anderson, there's other opportunities potentially.
Yeah, once Anderson's there, and there's not, but I agree.
I mean, roadway infrastructure's gonna be the first thing.
Safety first, right? Let's be, let's not be crazy and bring 13-year-olds through active construction sites, but where things are possible, if you can work around a construction site or flag it, or I don't know what the solution is, but I don't, third summer, I don't want the fourth summer, you know, third summer seems pretty hopeless at this point. Fourth summer, I don't wanna be hopeless as well.
Well, to make sure we're on the same page, Matt, can you confirm the Polar Creek neighborhood's horizontal work, which would basically preclude going across, set to the last one to two years, if I'm recalling?
No, less, yeah, less than that.
Okay. Was it two years for the whole timeframe?
Yeah, that sounds more, I mean, for everything, yeah.
Right. Horizontal vertical?
Well, notwithstanding connectivity across Anderson, they, PCN had indicated that they would reopen what was a dirt path, was a concrete path, I think by this fall. So, you know, I think that gets part of the way there, and then the question becomes, how soon does the Dr. Cog bikeway extension get done?
Just 2020.
Oh, that's it. So it'll be before summer.
I mean, before we even start looking at it.
Well, they're gonna be laying foundations this summer, right?
Yeah, I mean, they'll start their utility work here in the next few weeks to month, and then paving of the streets soon after that.
Right.
Once that's done, then you could have.
Once those roads get in, you, that's before they do any foundation work, so that one main.
Do you have your section, you should be able to have an opportunity.
Right, but then you're, you know, unfortunately, that's gonna drop, that's gonna drop you into a pretty active construction zone.
But it should be able to get you to Track H, that 1B little line there?
Right.
Get you to Track H, which should get you over to 1C, if you put in two small paths.
And then we could lean on Ranch to say, you know, give us this exact temporary road around your construction sites.
Corey, this might be a good thing for a subcommittee, to kind of, a couple people just to go and.
Matt, is the plan for construction vehicles to access Anderson from 88?
That's where they've been currently accessing.
And is there any plan for them to, to change at any point?
Not unless.
From Coal Creek?
Uh, no, not unless there's, there may be an exception for a certain piece of equipment that has to be used out of Coal Creek, but most of the access is from 88.
So assuming the roads go in sometime this summer, and all the heavy vehicle traffic is accessing off 88, presumably the access off South Coal Creek would be relatively safe for bicyclists traveling on there, because they're not gonna be, you know, fighting with bulldozers and big trucks.
We're requiring all construction traffic to go on 88, right?
Yeah.
Not down Coal Creek.
Yes, I'm just making sure. I think the one issue, Mark, is the paving, because right now that corner of where Anderson meets Coal Creek is just giant rocks. I don't know what the paving plan is, timeline for that, because you couldn't cross on a bike. I mean, I guess you could, as long as it's steel suspension and standing.
Where there's a will, there's a way, you know?
Because they tore out all the dirt and just thrown in a lot of loose rock to sustain the weight of the construction vehicles. I don't, I don't know what the plan is.
Yeah, I don't want any pedestrians in there until the road is paved, and so I want to.
So I guess, from an overall just viewpoint, though, of trail connectivity in downtown, it just sounds like, you know, we've seen some of the preliminary FTPs that were looked at when we met with RC Superior, and we just wanna make sure that they continue to carry through on those trails and make sure that we still have that access through the community as they bring those forth.
Is that enough for you guys? You want more?
Actually, when you look at their plans, they have more.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah, I've never seen.
So there was lots of trails, like, within that development, there was little parks and connectivity to the trails on the perimeters. So really, our view was not only just through those development zones, but also just to get out into the, connected to the surrounding community. But really, it's the 36 path and the McCaslin path and the Track H. Those are our three kind of main connection points.
Cool.
So, and this discussion has broadened out, kind of passed that, but, you know, we're always looking for a good connectivity of trails and making sure that, you know, you can get around, so.
And I think in fairness, we've been concerned about the Anderson farm since it first came up, about how we're gonna get through there. Is there gonna be a road? Is there gonna be paths? Why is there no park there? Little things like that. We sent recommendations to you guys, saying, we need to make sure there's paths here. That was part of our recommendation to you guys in May of 18, I think it was.
Okay.
And we pulled it up, I can't remember one of those.
Yeah, I, I.
In forefront, right?
I think it will be unambiguous that there will be a path, I mean, if somebody jumped in. Unambiguous, there will be a path from, that connects from Coal Creek into downtown. What remains ambiguous, I believe, is whether or not there will be a vehicle path as well, right? But, no, I've never heard even when that there won't be pedestrian bicycle connection through, effectively through Anderson.
Right, I mean, is that a fair?
Right, not even a hint. So there will, it's just, we can't bring kids through an active, adults through an active construction site.
Well, I, I don't, just to clarify, I don't know if, and we haven't seen the plans, you know, for Toll Brothers and all that, and to see, you know, what we're actually gonna be looking at, but I don't think it's accurate to say that there will be a path and a road.
No, I didn't say that, I didn't mean to say that.
Yeah, so there, there may be a road that, you know, bicyclists can use, and there may be sidewalks, but, you know, there wouldn't necessarily be, you know, a dedicated trail.
There will be, I mean, it may be a safe place for pedestrians and bikes, whether or not it's a sidewalk path, whatever. But yes, agree. I didn't know.
All right. So to continue on, we have a couple more topics and shortening of time. So one of the other key pieces is White Raven Park, and I guess I've called it, we've called it White Raven just because that's where it was, and there was a request for us to put in a park in this area. And we, it's been brought to us by a, a community, community member that was willing to put up some of the funding to provide some activity equipment there. We didn't get into exactly what activity equipment, or even where exactly within that location, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, we put it on the agenda and on the work plan as a, if the board directs us to, we look into that, because we really don't know from that community involvement that they've been asking for that in, I think it was like September, October, November, they were at a few meetings, always asking and saying, what can we do? How can we bring it forward? And again, this is very similar to Riverbend, where White Raven is a park that's been there, it's a, just an open space, I guess, and there, we could potentially add activity and equipment in there, but it's a question of, do we wanna spend the money there? Do we wanna spend the money somewhere else? Is this the right place for a park? How's it utilized? It was brought to us by, am I supposed to say names on this?
Sure.
Shita?
Shanti.
Shanti.
Toolzi.
See, I can't even say the name. So anyway, she was bringing it up, she wanted a park close to her business and to be used by little tots, and so therefore, it's just a discussion, we wanna know how, how we should proceed and, and what should we look at with that park.
And this is a unique case, because from, different from normal parks where the, the town would pay for everything, they're looking for some kind of partnership where they're actively trying to raise funds to support this. So the town's involvement, you know, essentially, it's, it's different, because the town could potentially get a new park for zero to little.
Except ongoing maintenance.
Except, yeah, correct.
Yeah, actually, that's a great point, because one of the things that Prostag did bring up, this could potentially be the only park on the periphery of Superior, and given the Broomfield Apartments and condos that are going right, right next to it, the cost-maintenance issues become a question mark.
Right.
So that's been one of their concerns from the very beginning. And actually, as I thought about this a couple days ago, you know, as part of this engagement process, you know, for lack of a better term, is it worth reaching out to Broomfield to see if they might be interested? Just given, you know, there's, I don't know how many condos are going up over there, but it's, it's not a small number.
So her business was here, and she was saying that, you know, having a park close by, or even in this zone, but there was lots of other issues here, this was her second or first or second opportunity, and there is some green space over here, it's more just what would that equipment be? And would they put something into this space up here or over here? So points to discuss, and, you know, just again, further community input, because we are right on the perimeter of Superior with all these housing right here that would be right next to it, so you're kind of just up the street from Safeway and Starbucks there.
Corey, can you zoom out a little bit?
Yeah.
Let me get there, because that'd give you a better.
So as far as place structures go, the closest we're looking at is Community Park.
No, Pirate.
Pirate Park or not.
Pirate or Community, but if you look at the overall view from here, Pirate's way up here, Community is over there, Wildflower's, you know, way over here. So really, it's that same kind of, this sector here, they have Pirate Park right at the base there, the southern end. So, but yeah, you're right on the edge, and then the community here has their own parks within the community, there's a couple little lots in there, and there was some discussions about utilizing those as well. But again, taking, you know, potentially a piece up here, this park was also identified when we were looking at the pickleball and where certain locations could be, it was one of the kind of unused, but again, just natural pieces of land and whether or not we want the equipment there, or just leave it as a natural plant, so.
What does a grade look like over there? Is that, but that needs substantial improvement?
It's very flat.
Okay.
So my understanding is that she's proposing to fund this herself, right?
I don't know about all of it, or a portion of it, I don't know exactly how far we got on that piece.
Staff received an email that their intention would be to fund the playground equipment, piece of it, and then we had some questions about, you know, like site costs, and we have followed up.
And what about the, the actual design? Did she fund the design?
That would be, yeah.
I mean, generally speaking, if you've got a private resident who wants to fund an amenity, it would be open to the public, it wouldn't be just for her. I think it's something we should explore. And we can deliver a new park potentially without any cost, why wouldn't we look at it?
From what I've heard of this, I'm a proponent of it, but I should also disclose that I volunteer with the school on occasion.
Corey, can you, you know, zoom back in on that exact site? So looking, looking at the site, and just to Neil's point, you can already see two social trails coming directly out of the apartments in Broomfield, I think that's, the maintenance costs are.
It's an old map, there's like an actual, the road's gone, the side is gone, it appears now.
Well, I know the road's gone for the social trail.
Those are Starbucks.
Yeah, I, I would say the social trails are not really used very much, they're to Starbucks, and that's about it.
Well, yeah, but there's, there's nothing to stop.
There's nothing to stop.
There's circulation, yeah, there's people.
But there's actually people on them all the time.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, but they're going to one plate, you know, they're going to Safeway, or they're going down to Starbucks. But you've had no public engagement on this at all at this point?
No, because it's been brought up to us in a couple meetings, and we put it on the work plan just to really hash out and discuss how we wanna proceed forward with it, just because it has been brought up, I think she's shown up like three months now, and talked about different steps, and as you can tell, she's very proactive, because she has brought forth more and more, and saying, even now, we're at the point of saying that she funded a large majority of that.
So first, as, just as, I'm all about optimizing the space we have, and so when I look at the, on the other side of East Arrow, that green space, that to me is optimized, I've seen people on that, sometimes with dogs off leash, or sometimes she's hanging out, but that space, whether or not that's optimized or not, but it's utilized, I should say.
All the time.
All the time. I don't think I could, on the other side of East Arrow, I don't think I've ever seen anybody there, except for, to your point, folks that are sort of cutting across to go to where they park their car, or to rush to Starbucks or Safeway or whatever. So I, I'm all about utilizing that space. I worry about, it's a very generous suggestion from the business owner, I sort of worry sometimes around what those partnerships, they look like, and things that we do are generally, like, five times as more expensive. Like, if I was building a swing set in my backyard, I'd have a budget, if you guys built a swing set for the same amount of kids, it would cost five times as much, because it's, it's gotta be heartier and more utilized and have the proper maintenance and installation and ADA compliance, so we should set some appropriate expectations with the business owner that if they wanna make a contribution, it's not, it may not be, and I don't know if it's, you know, for, if the expectation is 5,000, we should figure out what that expectation is to stand that up, because if it's 50,000, let's not talk past each expectation is to stand that up, because if it's 50,000, let's not talk past each other for very long. So, let's try to solve that earlier, but, you know, my view is, I, you know, I thought it was a really cool idea to put the pickleball courts, even though it fell apart there, just because it's totally, it's dead space as far as I'm concerned, and that's not, that's, you know, if it was pretty open space with a view, I'd say, "Let's not do anything with it," you know, but it's not pretty open space, it's, you know, next to an apartment complex. And as far as folks from the apartments using it, please, I hope so. I, I think, you know, I love that that's our community, that we invite other people from our community to, to enjoy it, it brings me pleasure, so, I, I love the spot, and it's right next to Broomfield, I think it's great.
So, any other comments? But, it sounds like we should continue to explore, um, what this may be, and, uh, see what, uh, level of expectations of, um, budget, and just durability of equipment that's going to be out there, so that it's not some log structure that won't last a year, and maybe more of a steel structure that lasts five, 15, 20, whatever.
Right, and it's kind of, and if somebody, you know, there's town liability associated with it, so we'll have to do the installation and everything with it. And it's super, and again, if Shanti's watching, like, super appreciative of the generosity and the suggestion, I would almost, this is going to sound weird, but I'd almost rather just pay for it ourselves, than if it's going to create friction with a business owner, if the business owner, and we don't have that many business owners in town, and we have relatively that one, and feel she wants to increase the amenities, if it's a few thousand dollars, just do it ourselves.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, my, my general thought about it is, I, you know, if there's money on the table, we should be optimizing any opportunities to, to deliver something for the community, but this isn't a parcel that we've, like, identified as a future park, it isn't something that Prostag has, you know, prioritized in the past, so I don't want, you know, the tail wagging the dog, and then all of a sudden, if it turns out that we've got diametrically different opinions of, you know, what it would cost to, to install something like this, that would actually be workable for the town, I don't want then all of a sudden this to become a Prostag project and a town project, that now we're spending, you know, small fortune on it, so like, I, I don't want us to all of a sudden be prioritizing a new park, um, just because it's something that's proposed from an individual that then doesn't pan out, and then we're like, "Oh, well, we can figure it out, and here's $250,000 to solve this problem." So, I just, I want us to be mindful about that, so I think we need to have the discussion with Shanti first, figure out exactly, um, you know, that she understands that we have certain requirements, uh, for the town in terms of, you know, the quality, in terms of access, um, in terms of, you know, what sorts of amenities, and then she can have a good idea then what it would cost, and if it's a deal breaker for her, then we can move on, and if it's still something that she's willing to explore, then let's take it from there.
One other thing to bring up is that Rock Creek Circle is relatively busy, with people that like to go kind of fast, and so from a safety standpoint, for little kids going across there, and just having a park there, it's a big, big concern sometimes. So, there may be more costs involved with managing the traffic there than just putting some playground equipment on there.
Well, there is that island right there that kind of forces you to slow down, whereas I'd be more concerned if we were talking about the...
You mean the rock there, everybody likes to run into?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I was going to say, how often have you actually watched people go past that rock? They don't slow down much. They hit it a lot, but...
Patrick, or you call that, I mean, we have a lot of data on recently installed playgrounds, structures cost, I mean, obviously Wildflower had its own drainage issues, but we should be able to cherry pick, you know, this piece of equipment costs X, and then the installation costs Y.
Yeah, we can do it, you know, we can do it quick.
You know, and then, hey, Shanti, this is what it costs a town to install something, you know, if you want to pick off this menu of what's, you know, what's reasonable, then we can have a conversation around budget and appetites. If she walks away, I, I kind of do agree with what Kevin said, I mean, this is a dead, dead spot, and I go back to what I said, I mean, the Bell Summit at Flatiron, the Broomfield space, there's a lot of people there, Broomfield is remotely interested in partnering here.
Right.
Just give them the space, not give them, but, you know, work with them to partner on the space, um, because I think we could get something out of it.
Let's definitely follow up with Broomfield.
Yeah, all good ideas, definitely worth exploring, right? Okay. We'll see.
Okay, next?
Yeah.
I'm cutting it closer now. So, um, next, we just wanted to touch base on Town 15, and we know that, uh, I don't know, I guess, there's been proposals brought up on Town 15, and we wanted to just discuss, and I think we wanted to discuss with OSEC as well, what's the recommendation for that space, not knowing exactly what would go there, but really what would be some of our key opportunities for amenities that would go on there, and, you know, even somewhat of a balance between them, not saying that any of this is what would go there, but say, they want a tennis courts and a baseball field and, uh, open space on the back app or something, right? But that's the, what's the final or proposed area that would go in there? So, it's more of a just discussion about how we would proceed with that, and I know that there's discussion to potentially work with OSEC on that, and come together as a joint, uh, recommendation from multiple committees to say, you know, when it's developed, if it's developed, um, you know, make sure we have half of it, it's open space, and half of it gets some sort of recreation opportunity or something, you know, in those realms. So, it's just more of a discussion to, how far do we go with that, and do we continue to work with OSEC? You're up, Todd.
Well, I was just going to say, along those same lines, maybe to expand that a little bit with the kind of vision plan for closing out that whole area.
Thank you.
Would be really a good thing to, I mean, is that something we can dive into in a bigger way than just looking at Town 15?
When you say, "Vision plan for that whole area," what do you...
I mean, I need to let...
Corey.
You want me to talk about a vision? I guess, we've, we've come to the last couple years of being asked to find places for things, instead of, like, having a good just understanding of what we want as a big picture, so, right now with McCaslin to, through the Recreation Center to even the new skate park, it's just, there's lots of amenities on our amenity list, about, here would be a great place for pickleball, or here would be a great place for tennis, or those type of things, do we have a good distribution of a master plan of, there's only a few areas left to really develop within, and I think in, while we looked at pickleball, we did an opportunity of the skate park and pickleball fits in there, if that's a master plan, then eventually we want to put pickleball, pickleball in Autry. And now, as we go down to Town 15, is there anything else that would be a major element that is missing in town, that if we were able to get it in, that would be a location that we want to put it? So, really, just a more of a vision plan to say, instead of, this is an opportunity, and where do I put pickleball, it's more of, here's where, if you want to put pickleball in, here's an opportunity for it. So, that's kind of the back and forth.
And from my perspective, you know, it's, it's a way to take and say, how do you, would you put certain things together and like things together, right? If you look at the BMX park and the skate park, those things really do fit together. You know, if you put a baseball stadium next to the skate park, these folks aren't paying attention, what do you, you know, what's going to happen if a ball comes over the fence and hits somebody, right? So, you want to kind of put like things together as well, kind of a master plan as you're going through, instead of, instead of what it feels like a little bit, we're doing is, well, we have a spot here, and we have a spot here, and the next thing you know, you kind of end up in an oleo of, of different things that maybe not match, right? You may have little, little kids here with, you know, teenagers here, and maybe you don't want to have them together, so it's just kind of a, a better plan.
Love it. Anyway, just more of a where we're headed in the future versus trying to do piece by piece. And, and that all ties back to our amenity priority list, and I know we talked about this like a month ago, about just if we had $750,000, what would you really do with it? And where would you put it? So, I mean, that's one of our, you know, if we have a vision for this zone, and, you know, a future build out of that, and if, uh, somebody came in to develop that, would we want some amenity in that, in their final development plan?
So, other than a rec center, what, what is the, what are the, the next three amenities that we guess are prioritizing?
I don't know.
Do you have a list you can talk to, yeah?
Well, there was also various amenities, like a large turf field, but that's going in part two, and there was, um...
Pool always comes up.
Pool is always a number one or two. I don't know, I can't remember. Uh, we had, I wasn't prepared on my amenities list today, I think this is...
We, we do have a prioritized amenity list.
Yeah, I think so. Well, and, yeah, so, you get into, a lot of the things we've been focusing on in the last couple years are the, um, the, well, Riverbend Playground has been the one that's been the most in the last year. We've been really trying to understand the vision plan of what our Prostag master plan, or just updated, uh, what, what the community is missing. Um, Community Center and Passive Spaces have been discussed multiple times in the last couple years with the Rec Center and Community Center components. Indoor pool is always high. Um, we did talk about new recreation opportunities for, um, like middle age, sorry, not middle age, middle, middle school kids, middle age, my role. Um, but, yeah, then we, we even had things like, there was the youth baseball fields, pickleball courts, White Raven's been one that we discussed a little bit more recently. Yeah, then you get into splash pads, and I believe there's a new splash pad coming in, and there was a, uh, in that development right across from the sports stable, outdoor pool, community gardens, climbing, uh, features in parks, which is always one of the additional amenities, uh, batting cages, agility courts for dogs, sledding hills, there, we have a lot of things on the list, and not always a place to put them all, and therefore, you know, it, it just depends on what really fits in some of the places to whether or not it go in. Sorry, go ahead.
Related topic.
I'm going to roll.
Can we ask that you guys keep your most current amenities list on the Prostag page on the board website? That's where I immediately went, was to look for the amenities list, because then that's a helpful, for when we're thinking about things, for us to be able to go back and say, "Oh, this is something that Prostag has seen as a priority," and it keeps it sort of in our forefront, you know, in front of us, and, because it's not on there, and you guys update it every year, so I think it's pretty important that we have the most current one available, not only for the board, but for the public to see.
I think tying back to sort of this vision plan or master plan or whatever, the other piece to go with that is, looking at these things all as individual piecemeal things, um, a pool, or this, or that, you know, some widget that goes somewhere, um, along with that kind of needs to be where, where we as a town would like these things to be, and how it fits together, um, in a, in a rational way, in cost-effective way, you know, how do we do this? And I think that's the piece that at least, I've been on this committee now for six or eight months or something, and it just feels like a lot of it is, you know, something comes and it's like this, not an emergency, but like we have to fit it somewhere, and it's kind of this hodgepodge, rather than a planned community. And, um, what I would, I guess, ask for some effort on our part, and your permission or, or help with, is how do we put together that, that master plan for this community, so that it really is something that, that is good in quality, and, and not just this hodgepodge of little widgets?
I could add on to that, just real quick. And I've brought this up before, and they keep bringing it up in every meeting, their master plan's from 2005. Um, it is really dated, because a lot of things that identified in that have been done, you know, it was Founder's Park was just a sketch, uh, Wildflower was a sketch, all those things are done, so the plan itself is 15 years old at this point. So, I think the park is struggling, we have this amenities list, but it doesn't tie back to a vision of what, or how do we want to do the infill, how do we want to work all this in? And I think that's why you get this sort of, let's plug this in here, plug this in there, but it doesn't tie back. Um, so, I mean, it is something I'm going to push for in the 2020 budget, is to get that thing updated, but, these guys have echoed it.
And there's only so much left to be built, and therefore, even some of the amenities we have on the list, we know some of those amenities are earmarked for Part One, Two, you know, other locations, so, we feel that some of these amenities are coming, it's just a matter of when, and is it a priority to put somewhere else, or how does that balance with what's proposed versus what we think we can put somewhere else?
Well, it's also easy for, sorry, when you guys ask us about trails, it's fairly easy when we say, "Okay, well, these are our top trails," because a trail has a geographical location already associated with it, and amenity doesn't. And that's the difference between those two plans, when you say, "Well, what's your top amenities for these things?" Well, here's our top amenities, but if you're talking to top amenity for a geographical location, we don't have that today, because we don't have the plan of what the thing should look like.
I think the only thing I would add in there is, part of this Town 15 stuff has been pushed for, by me in particular, because I really wanted Prostag and OSEC to put their heads together, because Prostag's got a vision for it, OSEC's got a vision for it, we're not going to give either one of you, "Oh, you get it, or you get it, we want you to work together on it." I would like to have some sort of a, at least a vision for that piece of property from OSEC and Prostag, so if somebody does come in all of a sudden and say, "We want to build the Taj Mahal there," I can go, "Oh, no, we've got a vision that, that seems more attractive to me at this point." So, I really would like to, you know, come back to the amenities list, and, you know, are there some of those things we can knock off and we can put there? I just, for me, that is the center park of town, and it goes all the way from Colton Road, all the way to 36 almost, and how do we finish that out? And what would your vision and OSEC's vision be to finish that out?
So, I, I don't, I agree with what everybody said around, particularly around it's time to update a document that's 13 years old, I think that's important. I would kind of reframe the, the context of, sometimes it feels kind of hodgepodge, um, because I think we have an opportunity, right? I mean, we have, well, there's not a lot of available space, we're really only four square miles, and we're pretty smart, the people before us, before anybody, that, you know, the fact that they bought Town 15, the fact that there is a lot of open space between our plan and community, so it's, you know, think of it as where you can place the Legos, and we have the ability to place Legos, and I think with your guidance, as qualified volunteers, doing things like, let's do like-for-like amenities close to each other, so you're not putting, you know, the Luke Skywalker head on, uh, somebody else's body on the Lego, right? Let's put the Legos, let's put the Star Wars Legos together and create something that's, that's attractive, and I think that's the guidance that we can get from you. So, I, I just want to be a little careful about updating a document, having a master plan, and if all of a sudden the number one priority is an aquatic center, we're never going to be able to afford, you know, I have come to grips with, we can't, we're not going to see a $20 million aquatic center in this town, unless something miraculous happens, it doesn't seem like it's possible, right? And similarly, if you plan, you know, that goofy velodrome that got built in Boulder, that was open for a year or two, you know, that was somebody's great idea, but it, it just didn't work out, right? So, the fact that we are flexible, that we have a very engaged committee, to me, hodgepodge feels negative, I think we have opportunities in front of us, and an engaged committee, and an engaged board, to take advantage of something like, you know, a fast-growing sport like pickleball, or, hey, we can afford the skate park this year, and let's accelerate that, or what we did with Wildflower, which was amazing, years ahead of schedule, you know, things like that, it's, that was, as a result of the hard work of Prostag, some of you were involved, and so, I, I just, hodgepodge, you know, opportunity, so...
Okay, we do need to wrap up, we're seeing a closing...
Yeah, good duration, that's what we wanted.
Closing thoughts?
I think Dan, that's on the other side.
I was just going to make one comment about the master plan, which is, the, the most exciting thing to me would be updating community engagement, because I think that's like way overdue with what we've got, the existing data. And then the second thing would just be tying in demographics of what we're going to build, like what the composition we think of the residents, how many of them are going to be kids, what age they're going to be, like, connecting all that back to the, what we're talking about for amenities, so, those are the two things I'd be most excited about, see.
And I, I think, you know, to Kevin's point, um, in terms of planning, you know, personally, like, with, with Town 15, I haven't heard any compelling idea right now that should be implemented, right? Like, I'm perfectly happy with it, I'm glad the, the town purchased it, and I'm fine with it just kind of staying undeveloped as is, um, but if there is a compelling idea, uh, I'm all ears. What I don't want Prostag to do, you know, I think we all still have, you know, PTSD following last year, talking about the Rec Center, you know, I, I, let's not go with any, any space that involves going to the voters, asking for $28 million to build a structure, whether it's a rec center, or, or indoor aquatics, or another pool, but, you know, to Corey's point, you know, if, if we gave you $750,000, what would you do with it? We could very well do that. Um, and so, what I'd like to know is, you know, what are the needs that, you know, the community really needs in terms of, you know, do we need another baseball field, do we need more turf fields? I understand we're doing stuff in, in Parks One and Two, but who knows when that's actually going to happen? Um, and, you know, just because we're doing something on that end of town, doesn't mean that this end of town doesn't need it as well, um, you know, tennis courts, pickleball courts, you know, whatever it is. Um, I would like to see kind of like realistic, these are the amenities that we think realistically the town needs, that we could implement relatively inexpensively in the grand scheme of things, wouldn't require going to the voters. Or, if we're fine, then let's leave it at this.
Okay, good discussion, as always. Thank you very much for your work, and especially thank you for the most recent work on the[1795.02] Thank you very much for your work and especially thank you for the most recent work on the Offrey Skate Park, that's been fantastic. New amenity to the town and I really appreciate all of your and staff's hard work on getting that underway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
I did hear some kids say that the Denver Skate Park is cool.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we're in Denver, we'll build one that's cool.